Yes, okay, I'd like to welcome you to the planning and zoning meeting of April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-three, as has become our new custom. Ken, would you like to, everyone stand up and like to lead us in pledge allegiance?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance. And just for the record, folks, as you can see, I'm not in the room. So for tonight's meeting, we've asked Kitty to chair. I will participate, but Kitty will be doing the chair function.
Thank you. Yes, okay, with, um, with commission members, begin to introduce yourself.
Douglas Keeney, alternate, Paul Chandler.
Kenny Kessler.
Kitty Graham.
Rob Ball.
Linda Curtis.
And of course.
And I'm Jolene Drucker. I'm filling in for Nancy as the recording secretary.
Beth McVack, planning director and Chuck Anderson.
Ken Stevens, chair.
Bob Black.
David Colman, just coordinator.
No, no rich out there.
Not that I can see at this time.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing on our agenda is a public, continue your public hearing for Frank and Judith Saunders, eight thirty G affordable housing, forty-two Greenwich, seventeen Whitney Road.
And I'll begin, try to wrap up a little bit for everybody. First of all, the commission would like to thank the applicant for accommodating the time necessary to complete the public hearing process due to technicalities pertaining to the use of Zoom. When the last commission meeting was to be held, it was agreed upon by all parties that written testimony would be submitted prior to the hearing. All written material by the town and the public was submitted in and included in the Google Drive for the four eleven meeting and also for tonight's meeting. And it has been available to review as part of the evening's final comments. Staff would submit the following. And these. First part is in regards to the affordability plan. Just note the following, the appendix A identifies the location of affordable units. Eleven units are identified, but thirteen are required to be located, and I believe there may just be a four missing from the appendix. Note that the commission requests that the thirteen units be identified by million income as follow. Six units at eighty percent and seven units at sixty percent. Missing from the plan is a sample calculation of the maximum rents of the intended affordable units under eight thirty G. B dash one dash C. As stated in the staff report and supporting documents, the town of Bethel has taken very seriously the need for affordable housing over the last twenty years. And has been very progressive in trying to support those needs as shown in the two thousand twenty-two Affordable Housing Appeal list, just recently issued by the state of Connecticut. Based upon many previous experiences of the commission and the act itself, and at that request of the chairman, staff was asked to review the record, including public testimony, expert testimony, the town's P O C D, T O D plan, and the appendix of the Affordable Housing Plan to the P O C D, and determine if there was a way to protect the public interest by making changes to the applicant's proposed development. Therefore, staff working with other professionals from various departments developed a concept site plan, which is included within your package, which follows the T O D master plan, the T O D regulations, increases the separation from the industrial use and historical future of dust as documented in the record. It also assimilates within the existing single and two-family residential neighborhood regarding height limitations and architecture, with an allowance of doubling the unit count for the zone in order to recognize the effort by the applicant to add to the need for affordable housing and recognizing the costs associated with filling that need. So all I, I also want to note for the record that, um, the illustrations associated with it, which are in the Google Drive, but I also made some hard copies if anybody needs a hard copy to review what was in the drive. I can go through those individually, just to note for the record that included with attachments is a section of the master plan report dated twenty-six, six, twenty-eight, twenty sixteen, excuse me. For the T O D zone, the P O C D plan for the town of Bethel effective January first, twenty twenty, with some attachments to that. There are two before and afters of a former eight thirty G application for nine Good Hill Road. There's also two before and afters for an application for an eight thirty G application pertaining to Sixth City Lane. I've also included the Affordable Housing Peels list of two thousand twenty-two, which I, just as a side note, I will tell you that I'm extremely proud of only because we are the only town in our surrounding area that has over that percentage.
Let's not go into a six point.
It is five point eight seven. No one comes close to the amount of affordable units that we have. Also attached to that, we have the T O D plan, which shows an illustration of the use of the property for seventeen Whitney Road. Add to that is the concept plan that our engineering department put together with our, based on our record, and some architectural renderings adjacent to that, along with some pictures of the neighborhood, uh, Google Drive showing the surrounding properties pertaining to this property. And finally, the, uh, which is already included in the record, but it's a good source of review, um, was the denial that was, that was adopted dated ten thirteen twenty twenty-two by this commission. Um, and lastly, what I want to do is just note for the record for the commission last night, the, and the weapons commission had a meeting. They ran kind of late. They, they were there till ten thirty last night, and they also did make a decision regarding seventeen Whitney Avenue. And the decision was to approve the application. And that's all I have for the time.
Thanks very much, Deb.
Thank you.
Chancellor, for the record, when I was planning to do it, that's, well, first of all, in response to Wagner's comments, I didn't prepare the, uh, the affordability plan. And it seemed like those are just administrative additions that could be, could be added. Uh, what we would want to have is have this denied on that technicality, in which case I'd want to keep the hearing open, but otherwise, no, otherwise I would just ask that we just add, add that to the record after tonight. Um, then with that clarification, my expectation would be is if there's a couple of new comments that Mike would add, um, and if there's anything new, I know there was an effort through the chairman that what we were supposed to be doing tonight is just to narrow things down, and people are going to comment on anything that's new. Um, the customary procedure is the applicant would have the last word, so I'd like to just sum up after that. So if that's acceptable to, to the chair, I just turn the floor over to Mike to, to comment on some of the, the, you know, a couple of the new items. I don't think there's a lot, but a couple of things to, to add.
Thank you. Now, good evening. For the record, Mike Madzuko. Uh, yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to go over to address some of the comments that were either put in the record or voiced verbally. The, the town engineer had a couple of comments about the curb cut and the sidewalk. And we feel that based on where the property lines are and where you come out to the road, the curb cut is it, there's a what, the shoulder of the road on that side of Whitney is very wide because the right away is almost like one more than ninety degree turn. So they shifted the road over to lessen the sharpness of the curve. So there's a wide shoulder there. That's part of the reasons why the, the curb cuts, in addition to the fact that the adjoining properties to the south where the driveways are close together, their frontage is almost less than twenty feet. So they, they have to almost back out into the, it's very narrow. They have to back out into the street to get out of parking or their driveway. So we feel that it's not really that big of a problem, and it does create a nice approach into the site with the way it's sort of situated right now. Yeah, could you pull the intersection of the two driveways, the inner intersection, and pull it out a little bit? I mean, yeah, I guess you could, but I don't know what huge benefit you're going to gain from that. And the other comment was about the sidewalk. We had a portion of the sidewalk between the two driveways, and the town engineer felt like, well, shouldn't have, it wasn't really necessary, but I don't know, we feel that it's, it is a safety improvement. It'll, it'll try to get people off of the road on that point, and, and there isn't sidewalks immediately in the area, but if you go down Whitney Road, you end up conditioning into sidewalks on both sides of the street. So at some point, they, you know, there might be connection. Eventually, it might get, you know, downtown along Elgin. So it's better to probably have the sidewalk there than not have it. But, you know, we can, if the commission feels otherwise, then we can certainly take that section of the sidewalk off, but that's, uh, to be determined, I guess. Uh, there was a question about the fencing with regard to privacy. There is an existing fence on the subtly border against the Oliver's that's sorry, stoppage privacy fence there now. And we have on the other western side, we have a privacy fence shown there for the adjoining property owner. And part of the site has retaining wall, though there's really limited exposure for light trespassing off of the property because of the retaining wall. Now, the one area is where the parking faces the rope along the road where Mr. Magnus said that, you know, there's light shining into the neighborhood. And it can cross the street. However, it's, the house is almost a hundred and twenty-five feet away from the parking area. And it also is at an angle. So if the cars are, the only time you're gonna really have them, like, is the cars are exiting the site, will sweep around, and they'll catch a corner of the house. The house is not really facing, like, in a perpendicular fashion, the lights coming out of driveway.
Excuse me, Mike, could you, could Dave, could David bring up the site plan? I think it'd be easier for the commissioner and what you're talking about.
Yeah, David, if you can bring up the site plan.
Pointing it out on the site plan.
Sure.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, the, uh, site plans, their last revision date is March ninth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. I'll bring them up. And what sheet are we going to?
Just go to the site plan, David, please.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chris, could you shut that door, please?
I could probably look at that plan too, David.
Well, maybe just a point of information. I have my phone on my cell phone, and that is, so I can get into the Google Drive and follow comments. Thank you.
But if you look at the aerial view here, you can see that this is perfect. Thank you. So this is the house across the street, and the driveway is here. So vehicles exiting will be just sweeping light across, across this corner of the house, and then the parking area is here, but you got over a hundred and twenty-five feet to that parking lot. And if you can go to the site plan, David. Unfortunately, it doesn't show the, you know, it doesn't show the house across the street, but you can get an idea where the parking area is here. But again, going back to the privacy on the southern side, there is a fence right here now that is a stockade fence, so it does afford privacy.
How old is that fence?
Oh, I have no idea.
Can you, can you advise me to where you are referencing Mr. Mizzuka with this fence?
Uh, the, the existing fence, David, is, I don't know if you can see me, but it's the, it's near the bike rack. Go to the east.
Okay.
Down to the south. Okay, go to the west a little bit. Okay, so for, starting there along that property line.
I see.
There is a stockade fence. Yep, there you go. Now you can, you can see the symbol there. And so if you go, Dave, can you pan to the western corner, northwest corner? So we had shown also a fence here.
What is the height of that fence?
Um. I don't, I don't see a call out for that. Oh, I'm sorry, I do. Six foot high. White vinyl fence.
Is there an elevation change between the parking lot there and the adjoining properties?
Yeah.
Nah, not over here. There isn't. It's, it starts to fall off. So you're, you're basically three seventy here, and then you're three sixty-six down in here. And then there's, yeah, that's along the retaining wall, David, where you have the cursor.
Uh huh.
But that wall is anywhere is from three to yeah, three and a half, four feet high. So that's where you are affording protection there. And then as well as these three spaces here, heading in a westerly direction. So you have that protection.
So the three sixty elevation, the three seventy, the parking lot is ten feet higher than the adjoining property at the, at the westernmost side.
Uh, it's like four feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so in that site, the fencing that's proposed is a six-foot vinyl solid fencing or?
Yes, solid privacy fence.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six foot or four foot, you said?
Six. Six feet.
Now, is that from the, from the bottom or from the top of the property? Where, where, where it's, where it's higher there?
Well, it would be probably a foot off the ground. So, yeah.
So the property is actually higher.
Well, yeah, our property is, is a little bit higher. It's, it's, there's a little bit of a ridge that runs through here. But we'll be grading gently down from this point. So this is about at existing grade where our westerly edge of the parking lot.
Okay, so the rear of the property, the fencing associated with that, adjacent to the industrial zone?
Uh, it, we wrapped around the corner, but then this is the industrial zone here, which.
Is there any fencing? I'm just looking.
No, no, we don't have any, we don't have any fencing proposed along there. We just step that, there's an existing recently installed two-foot retaining wall. And then once you get further east, you have the retaining wall that's fairly high for the industrial storage bins, the material storage bins.
And.
Yeah, and that, that's, I think, almost two hundred feet long from, from there, right, David, all the way to the eastern.
And where is the height of it?
That varies, but I would say on the eastern end, it's probably six to eight feet high.
Okay. So, so you have residential use with the industrial. Okay, I got it.
Right, yeah, and I mean, in terms of, in terms of the, yeah, it's unfortunate that that's right on the property line because ordinarily.
What's unfortunate?
That the industrial bins are right on the property line. Because ordinarily, if we were looking at doing a site design on an industrial piece of property adjacent to a residential zone property, you'd have a buffer. And the buffer would be, and the regulations is twenty-five feet.
Right.
For industrial to residential, but, you know, that typically would have been held.
Okay, but along those same lines, Mike, in, when you have a residential zone, a budding and industrial zone, you have the opportunity to go with, um, higher fencing to create a definitive barrier between the two. Um, you can use an eight foot, eight foot fence. So I would highly recommend that, um, the use of an eight-foot privacy fence be specifically along the rear boundary of the property, and I also would be, um, consistent with what you propose, uh, adjacent to the other residential properties. So I think you said a six-foot vinyl, you know, some kind of six-foot fence adjacent to um, the property.
Thirteen Willow.
Thirteen. Thirteen Willow, and also I am well aware that there is a stockade fence adjacent to the property here, there.
Right.
Um, I believe that it would be more appropriate to install, um, six-foot vinyl fence and take, remove the stocking. I'm just, I mean, I'm just telling you.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, it's not, that's, whether it's, I mean, the vinyl will last longer, but it's still providing the same.
Will be consistent.
Yeah, I mean, it would, yeah, it would be.
But also there have been problems with the stockade fence in the past, and I think that that will correct the problems.
Fair enough. And.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, no problem. Um.
Mike, before you go on to the next thing, since you, you discussed that apron issue, now that the plans are up.
Okay.
Jump in it.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, David. If, can you just zoom into the curb cut at the street? Right, perfect.
That's as close as I can get. Yeah.
That's perfect. So you can see that there's the drive with the adjoining property owner to the south. There's paved driveway is right here. And their property line, their frontage is from here to, to that heavy line corner, that sharp corner right there. And so right now, the, the two curb cuts, curb cuts kind of join together right in this area. And as I was saying, you have a very wide, you have a very wide shoulder here because this, the road, and actually the property corner of the right away, on the other side, it comes out into the street according to the G I S mapping. But in, in an effort to lessen the sharpness of that turn, they had pulled it away from the opposite right of way. And so between that and the fact that this is a very short or narrow width frontage lot, that, that's sort of how it ended up, and it just, we're just trying to, I don't think it really hurts anything by leaving it this, the way it is right now. And then, yeah, could you, could you maybe tweak it a little bit and sharpen and make it a little bit more separate? Yeah, I guess you could. But again, I don't think, if you go too far, you start having to come around the corner and then do a wonky turn to get into the site, and then that does make it a little harder for emergency vehicles because they're larger. And then this was the section of the sidewalk that, you know, we had already, you know, we showed a sidewalk along here. Then I think we, we might have added this after the fact, but we just felt like it's better to have it there than not have it. Even though it's a very short piece, but it do get people off of, off of the road potentially and using the sidewalk. And as I said, I think there's maybe one lot here before you start hitting the existing sidewalk. It's pretty much on both sides of Whitney going down to fifty-three. And I think that was about it. In terms of comments, that wasn't really a whole lot.
If I have a question. Um, you have to refresh my memory. I'm sorry. Um, if this was explained already, I think you said that the rear part, there should be, um, a twenty-five foot distance from industrial to residential.
Yeah, but that's requirement, that's a requirement on the industrial side. So it's, it's an industrial buffer requirement, not on the residential side. So if we were developing and doing site planning on the industrial side, the regulations say that you need a twenty-five foot buffer from an adjoining residential property. It's not saying that because the residential is addition to the industrial that we have to put the buffer on our side. It's the obligation of the industrial because that's the more intense use. Okay.
I would question even more for that, would that twenty-five foot buffer be what is industrial to industrial?
It wouldn't apply.
Wouldn't apply.
So, because I know there's some intention about this piece of property and when the zoning change, correct? Well, then it's that possibility, how they got away with putting that stuff right on the property line?
It, according to everything that we've heard, that there was no, this was always, there was no zone change to industrial. So you have to look at it as an existing non-conforming use in the R R ten zone. So to that point is, it doesn't, it really didn't matter if it was a commercial or industrial use. You, you would have to go by the zone.
Yeah.
Because if you ever did something to that non-conforming use, you'd almost have to, you couldn't put another non-conforming use in it. You have to either leave it, make it less intensive, or, you know. Actually, make it a conforming.
This is the point I was bringing up.
Yeah.
No, good question. Um, one other question. Um, just a quick, um, those, you were talking about some light pollution coming across the street on those eight spaces down front here.
Yeah.
Uh, there are possibilities, there's some strawberry there.
That's another option. We don't. Yeah, it could be.
I see you have it shaded. Is that for snow?
That's for snow. And one thing we would do is keep it back off of the edge, so it wouldn't interfere with snow.
I, I think that'd be an easy fix, about putting a fence right in front of the property.
Yeah.
And then on the southern portion of the sidewalk, I would recommend another, uh, warning strip because if you're gonna end your sidewalk into another driveway, just there on the, on the, on the eastern side.
Right.
Right there, yeah. If it's ending into another driveway, you have a visually impaired person.
Right.
They would require, and I, and I agree with your idea about sidewalks. They will eventually hopefully be connected to somewhere. So anywhere, anytime a developer wants to put a sidewalk on their favor of it.
Yeah, and, you know, not for nothing, but a lot of people park on both sides of that road. And you get a lot of people parked not only on both sides, but they're crossing each other. So it, to the point where you can't get two cars to path, even though the road is, road itself is pretty wide. This is not wide enough for two vehicles to park on both sides, crossing each other, because there's just enough room to get one car, you know, one and a half cars through at that point. So it's, it's not an ideal situation that they park on both sides of the road, is that we not wide enough to have that, to handle that, that situation, unfortunately.
If I can just ask another thing, um, Beth had brought up the idea of the eight-foot, um, vinyl fencing along the rear. Is it possible to simply bring eight feet all the way across? I'm still concerned about the western property against somebody else's house.
Well, I thought we discussed that, that it was already eight feet.
No, I thought I heard six.
Yeah, no, I had six, but six or eight feet, it's not.
Well, I think eighteen.
I think it's a big difference.
No, it's sixty. Right, but I'm saying, if you're putting up a six-foot fence, putting up an eight-foot, is that materially different in terms of cost is what I'm, my point.
It's acceptable.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
But in looking, I, I had forgotten how close some of the mechanicals are located to the property line. And it's been my experience in the past, putting that type of fencing that close, it could affect the air circulation associated with the mechanical units. I've seen that before. So, I mean, I like my, I like the idea, but it again, has to deal with the location of, um, the building and the mechanicals to the property line. It may not be.
Our own chemicals.
No, they're right, they're right, right there.
Yeah, I don't think that that's, it's on the north side of the building too.
We'll drop it.
I'm trying to just make some notes here. Is there anything else?
Well, we have the public.
Yeah.
And then the commission can always come back and get to the public if something.
And then, as I said earlier, we reserve a right to the sum up after the public's.
Excellent. Okay, so it's time for public comment. If there are anyone who would like to come forward and speak about this application?
Arthur Ingram, thirteen Willow Street. Obviously, I'm happy to hear about some.
I'm sorry, may I ask that you come up here because it is being recorded.
Again, Arthur Ingram, thirteen Willow Street. I'm happy to hear some talk about some fencing along the western edge. I like the idea of it being eight feet. I'd also like to see some shrubbery along that, on the inside of the fencing, just to. I'd also like to see some shrubbery along the on the inside of the fencing, just to reduce the the sound that's gonna come. I mean, that that parking area is is very close to my house. I mean, it's. Probably twenty five feet from the corner of my house, there's gonna be a lot of noise in that parking area is right there, so. I'd like to see some shrubbery added in there, just, you know, for some. It reduces the noise and, you know, I guess there's a six foot vinyl fence along the backside of my property. And if that, you know, if that tapered into an eight foot fence going along the western edge of the seventeen Whitney, that'd be terrific.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anyone else who would like to speak here?
Thank you. Nancy Studick to Ridgefield Road, Bethel. Um. I I heard that cars park on both sides of the street, some. Exactly parallel to each other. That's crazy, but it concerns me that if you have sixty parking places. But you have forty, what is it, forty two apartments, that eventually there's potential easily for eighty two people to be living, eighty four people. To live there. With the possibility of everybody having a car, where is the access cars going to park? And that's my biggest concern with the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in this room like to step forward and speak? David?
I see, Mr. Brad Colts has their hand raised, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. Brad Colts, one Fairchild Drive. Here in Bethel. Um. I I've just got a couple of very quick points to to go through. Uh, the first is that the Freedom of Information Commission has. Accepted a formal complaint filed regarding the February fourteenth meeting. Based on a town official illegally ordering the public away from the hallway while waiting to return to the public hearing. Um. Legal counsel has indicated that it is a likely outcome of that hearing. That it will invalidate. The February fourteenth meeting and all subsequent meetings that flowed from any decisions or actions that this board took, this commission took. Relative to that meeting. So we're we're pressing forward with that and I would urge this commission. To suspend any action on this until the Freedom of Information Commission rules on that. Secondly. Uh, the record clearly shows that no action has been taken by this commission at any time. To legally move seventeen Whitney from industrial to residential. It is clearly shown on documents referred to this evening by Ms. Kavagna. As being an industrial property on the map, and I would refer to a prior meeting at which Mr. Slater said, if it's on the map, it's on the map. We have done an exhaustive review of every meet meeting minutes of this commission, and there is no record. Of this piece of property having been moved since the. Twenty eighteen map had it on industrial from industrial. As an industrial property, eight thirty G is not applicable in Bethel, period, full stop. The TOD. Uh, is being currently, a suit is being prepared. We are challenging the legality of the TOD expansion that occurred in December of twenty nineteen. Um, and I just want to also let this board beware that we are seeking to invalidate every decision that this board has made relative to the TOD since January first of twenty twenty. Relating to the comments this evening by Ms. Kavagna, the twenty sixteen master plan. Clearly shows on its maps that seventeen Whitney Road is planned as open parkland. There's no building on it on the map, it's open. Um, and it's also the same document that shows it clearly as being zoned industrial. Regarding Mr. Slater's comments this evening, the affordability plan. Absolutely should be included before this commission makes any ruling, and the public should have an opportunity to review it and comment on it. Prior to a ruling by this commission. I would like to point out. That if this commission proceeds with the approval of of any TOD related projects, and specifically the seventeen Whitney Road. Project while the F O I C hearing is pending. And while this litigation is now moving forward. Um. The town is potentially going to be opened up in jeopardy, and I'm not exaggerating, to hundreds of millions of dollars in lawsuits. As potentially every homeowner in RR ten. Could join a suit for damages. So I I just urge this commission to please act with some caution regarding this. It, this is a powder keg. And there are a lot of of passions on both sides of this issue. But there is some serious legal challenge being prepared on this, and I would urge this commission. To put a pin in this until that gets resolved because of the potential liability to the town. And to act responsibly in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm seeing a Miss Cynthia McCorkindale had her hand raised, Madam Chair.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. Okay, Cynthia McCorkindale, nineteen Elgin Avenue. Um. A couple of things, well, what what Mr. Colts just laid out, I knew about half, about half of that, but. I I have to agree with him if there's all this going on that. Um, and I and I appreciate the time that's been taken and by both the developer and the the commission. To, you know, hear us out and to move forward. The thing that, the the three things that bother me right now. Are. I don't hear commitments to putting up the eight foot fence. I was kind of taken aback at, it seemed like some hesitation about. Um, replacing the stockade fence by Oliver. Goncalo's property, that just would seem to make sense for consistency, but and and shrubberies and whatnot, I. I just would like to see something more concrete rather than, oh, yeah, that could be done, or that's a good idea. Um, doesn't sound like any full commitment. I still cannot wrap my mind around. Um, honestly, I've tried so hard to put myself in the shoes of this developer. And I just cannot understand why. Number one, once the thirty units were denied, boom, okay, eight thirty G, forty two units. It just doesn't make any sense at all, and it seems, it just seems like, um. That, you know, I feel pitted against the developer simply because. And for example, another thing that troubles me is. If someone is parked across the street from my driveway, I cannot get out of my driveway. I cannot back out of my driveway. Everyone on both streets has that problem, mostly on Elgin. Many of us have short driveways, we don't have, you know, circular driveways or even, we have one lane driveway, so we have to back out of our driveways. When people start parking seriously on both sides of the street all the time, and that's gonna happen. Because I don't think you have adequate parking, I think that you're underestimating the parking, or perhaps. Being overzealous in the number of units. Uh, I really, really think that just from a a standpoint of just the community. Uh, just. The community and just the the intentions, what could be the intention other than money? That's it. And so I just really, I just really can't understand. Why someone would want to put such a huge project. It 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 invalidates all of us in that neighborhood. We're just, you know, two people, five people, a couple of kids, it's just not right. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else, David?
I'm seeing no other hands raised at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. Kind of a good segue, I guess, to start where it starts, which is, it is no mystery that that. This. Project, having denied the earlier one with with smaller units, has not been well received by the public. And frankly, you know, there's conservative reaction, the commission that's been negative to it, very. Large and too much, but. This is a product of eight dash thirty G, and. I'm very happy that you have able counsel that is very familiar with land use law. In general, and in particularly can guide you under the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. Couple of things that I wanted to comment, if you look at the record, your commission has, unlike all the other times when somebody, you know, is standing up to get an approval. And you deny it, they have the burden of going to court demonstrating that you made a mistake, that you didn't have, that that. I had all the evidence I needed to prove that I was entitled to to an approval, and you denied me nonetheless, or there's some other procedural error, et cetera. Connecticut law, which gave you, gives you the power to have zoning in the first place, said. Affordable housing is so important that we are gonna put the burden on you. To demonstrate if an affordable housing project should be denied, and it has to be proof that there's. Such, I guess, rather than than paraphrase, words are. You have to have, you need to protect some substantial public interest. And that public interest has to clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and there's no modifications that could be made that would permit the application. That would would address that area of concern. Um, yeah, the. Folks looked at it from a fire safety standpoint, and it passed muster. Police looked at it and it passed muster. We weren't required to do a traffic study. Um, and and so we we did is, we wanted to make sure that. The access was safe, that we weren't providing any any issue with the public safety in terms of of traffic. Um, and Mr. Haskett presented his his report in in that respect. It showed that the travel, travelway is properly designed and it will be safe in front. So there simply aren't any public health and safety grounds to deny this. And I understand that this is more units than what the commission previously denied, and this is larger than. Uh, than what the neighborhood would like, but that's that's really. Not the issue, and you heard earlier that there might be some dispute about TOD regulations, and well, the beauty of this is, regulations don't matter under the Affordable Housing eight dash thirty G. Unless you can say that that particular regulation. That an application doesn't comply with is. Raises such an important public safety grounds, like I was mentioning before, that outweighs the need for affordable housing. So if someone comes in with an application, they don't have to comply with every set of regulations, so if there is some kind of dispute that's gonna happen with other TOD. It really is not what drives eight dash thirty G. This has to be viewed on its own. I would also like to comment in terms of, I mean, there is the one, the one email. Uh, the Department of Public Health reached out to the State Department of Public Health. And they just said, you know, that there is a concern about dust from from the neighboring property owner. And then had some documents from both EPA, from from EPA. You'll deal with managing the dust on somebody else's property. There's no standard in there, I mean, there can be rules that, you know, you could have a cannabis facility, you can't be X number feet away from a church. Uh, there can be rules that that EPA or the D could have instilled and said that you can't develop certain kinds of intensive uses within a certain distance of a water course or some other research. There is no such standard that would prevent a neighboring property owner from using. Their land because of the behavior that's going on next door. Uh, that's, that's really a red herring, because those standards say how the neighbor needs to be managing their property, how that. And unfortunately, after the number of complaints that are in the record, that. Property has been managed, has been managed, they're using the irrigation system to to deal with that. Uh, there's no evidence in this record that would, that would be anything other than speculation. Uh, that A, the neighbor is not going to now adhere to the requirement to manage their dust. Because if that's a problem, it, you know, a life with one single family home, couple of children running around on that property. Is no more or less important than having, you know, a a development like this. If there's a problem with the neighbor's dust. The Department of Health ought to be knocking on their door and making sure it's dealt with. Uh, but we believe it has been dealt with, we believe the record shows that it has been dealt with. Um, and our property is residentially zoned, we're entitled to to use it for residential purposes, and we believe we are now, you know, entitled under eight dash thirty G to have both the higher density. Provided we do the, have the the number of affordable housing units required by law. Uh, and that that we do. Now, the affordability plan is really, it's what that document is, because there was a suggestion, like, that the public hearing should be kept open because of that. It's it's a tool, it's not the document, you need one, it has to be there, but it's the guiding document that if this project is approved. Then the persons, when people qualify, it's basically the manual that they use. So staff. Pointed out that there there was a page that might have been missing to show exactly which units are gonna be there, and a sample calculation of how. Uh, how the the calculation is done for determine affordability. Those are just ministerial documents that. Uh, you know, indicated that that we would provide, it's not something that really governs, you know, we're required by law to have that affordability plan, it's there. So we pointed out a couple of details that will be added, and and as we indicated at the very beginning, we'll we'll add those. The commission thinks they they need need that before the public hearing closes, by all means, you keep the hearing open for that, because we really think it's ministerial and and that's not necessary. The other comment that we've made tonight about the Freedom of Information, there's no, people can make Freedom of Information complaints, and the Freedom of Information Commission will do what it does. It's pretty rare that it invalidates, uh, it invalidates administrative action. It can happen, but there's no basis for this commission to say, okay, no mas, I'm not gonna go forward with our application because. Someone says that they filed a Freedom of Information complaint, that will, that will take its course, and certainly. We didn't hear, at least during the time I've been here, no, no one's come in and said that I was denied an opportunity to come in and present my case to you. You certainly heard people over and over, sometimes saying the same things over and over again, so. Be able to show that people who were denied an opportunity, a fair opportunity to participate in this hearing, I think is a, it is a long shot, so. Um, the conditions, and I'll say on the record, I think we did before, but those requirements for the eight foot fencing. We will agree to those as a condition, and we don't wanna be equivocal about that, that that can be added. Uh, if if some shrubs or something that you think will will aid and benefit to the neighbor, by all means, add add those as a condition, but. Please, I think it would be a number of reasons, not the least of which would be speculation to believe that somehow gonna be harm on our property. Um, unlike what would happen to other residents in the neighborhood, because we're we're next to that industrial use. Uh, that under the requirements, we believe we've satisfied everything that we need to do to show that this plan warrants approval. Under eight dash thirty G, notwithstanding a lot of opposition, and I understand it. I'm facing right up, and I know that that this members of this commission, that they're not thrilled with this plan, that would like something different, you gave some guidance after the TOD. About a different kind of a design that should come in, and and the my client. Clients exercise their right to say, all right, we'll 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 come in with a plan that's probably bigger than the old one, and but we have to. You know, lose the right of having a certain number of them be market rating units, they're gonna be units that'll be affordable housing. You've almost hit the six percent mark, but got to shoot for the ten percent mark. And, you know, we'll add some additional affordable housing on what I think. Mike is very well designed, and would ask the commission that notwithstanding all the opposition, appreciate it, that could come with affordable housing applications. Uh, that you follow eight dash thirty G and recognize that we have met that burden. Uh, and or that, I guess, more appropriately, that there isn't the basis on this record for you to conclude that there is some substantial public interest that outweighs the need for affordable housing. For that reason, I think now, whether you, whether you like the plan or not, you can fall back on the fact that you will get, I know we'll get guidance from from Attorney Andrews. Uh, that it's really a function of of the direction that you're getting from state law, and not necessarily what you consider to be your 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 favorite use of the site. So for all the, you know, the both. For those reasons, you know, we'd ask that you you approve the application.
Is it? Can I say?
Just the affordability plan.
Put your name and address in there.
Judy Saunders.
Address.
Seventeen Whitney Road. The affordability plan, um, Chris Visnal, the night that he introduced it. The building, he had picked up on that paper missing, and he gave you all a copy of the correct one, so it really should be in there. The page is missing.
It's not willing to get it to you if you don't have.
Yeah, seventeen Whitney is where you live.
Oh, no, eighty four.
Thank you very much. I know, I'm sitting here going, you know.
I know, right, yeah.
She doesn't live in that, in that, in that, the shade.
I feel like I lived with them.
I can understand that.
Eighty four King.
Okay, uh, commission members, Ken, would you have anything you would like to say?
Um, since the.
Your legal issues that might be raised. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I'll absolutely.
Do they have questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's why I had questions. Oh, I'm sorry, that's why I had questions. Go ahead, Ken, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Apparently some legal issues have been raised, perhaps we should keep the, the hearing open.
Legal issues, who's?
Uh, the gentleman who spoke before.
Oh, Mr. Caltz?
Yeah, so maybe we shouldn't close it, find out what's going on.
Christopher.
Linda. Brad. Any comments, any questions? I'm sorry.
Uh, please, no, I do not have any questions.
Penny, anything further?
No questions.
No, ma'am, no, thank you.
I, I hear nothing right now.
Point of information, point of information, sorry, is the hearing closed?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Um, I, I can give you my recommendation about the, keeping the hearing open. There were two potential reasons. One is because of some details on the affordability plan and there were some other. That is something that probably is not necessary and based on, uh, it's your call, but I think that you have the information. There's, I don't see the hearing for that. The major reason is because possibly there's a separate FOIA complaint. That and FOIA has among its many remedies, the option of invalidating an action. Um, and, and so that, that was the suggestion is that. I would continue it and basically put this on hold until we get a result from that. The problem that we're having here is that by state law, we have to render a decision. This is a site plan application. We have to render a decision within thirty five days after the wetlands permission decided. They decided last night. And you have the, there's a potential that if you don't render a decision within thirty five days. Uh, you could, a judge could, could hold that it's automatically approved. So I would not recommend that you keep the hearing open because of the FOIA.
We would recommend we, we can close it.
Yes, yes, I think.
Madam Vice Chair or Madam Chair? Uh, do, do Mr. Stevens or Mr. Leknar, did, did they get it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Hey, before they, can I just add one more comment in regards to the FOIA? Uh, my recommendation to any commission member that has any questions in regards to whatever statements Mr. Colts made this evening. Um, or suggestions, uh, I can put you in contact with counsel that is handling the FOIA application. So you can be, um, discuss it with them. And that's where it should go with this, not from the general public, but between you and.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, I'm terribly sorry. Uh, Bob Legg, did you have any comments or questions you'd like to add?
Uh, I have one question. There was talk of the replacing the stockade fence.
Right.
Who owns the stockade fence right now? Is it the homeowner next door or does the Saunders?
The property owner Saunders.
Saunders property?
Yes.
So we could make that a, a stipulation and an approval.
Right.
That potentially replaced by what we want.
Yes, they, they already said that.
They stated they'd be willing to do that.
Okay.
All the fencing, so that it's all the same. It's, it's six to eight foot final fencing all the way around. If where it's supposed to be, yes.
And we have done that in the past. We have made stipulations in, in approvals to, to make sure that certain things are done. Whether the developer wanted to do them or not.
Yes.
It's part of the approval and to get the approval, you, you have to agree to it.
But he's already, according to what we've just heard.
Okay. Okay, that's clear in my mind now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ken Stevens?
I'm good, thank you. I think it's been fairly well covered over the last several months.
Okay, so, so we have.
Madam Chair, are, are you going to give the public a chance for rebuttal?
Oh.
Uh, the last word is for the applicant, this would go on.
Well, yeah, they usually get two chances. But they've had enough. Well, thanks. Well. We, we, we did, we did say the final would be with Mr. Slater, so.
And I didn't add, I mean, one thing I'll point out is I didn't add any new information. So, you know, I think in, Attorney Andrews could, could correct me, but if I did, just in my summation. Presented some new report or something new for the public to comment on, then I think by all means, I think that, that, that wouldn't be fair for them not to comment on it. But I simply did a summary of our position based on all the evidence that's been submitted before. So for that reason, I, I would think you don't need to go around in circles, but that's certainly your call if you want. Public view, public.
It's, it's up to the commission. Typically, we do allow the, the applicants or if, so if the public does, we would allow the applicants to respond again. That said, if there's an appeal, if, if there's a denial appeal, the commission has the burden of proof. So theoretically, the commission gets the last one, but we, you get to deliver it, so.
So is that a yes or a no? Is that a yes or a no for public comment, point of information?
Commission think that we should allow the, or better, you think? Okay, I'm going to say yes. Okay, well, it's normally what we do and, and, but remember now, if you're going to add something, I would like, remember what you've already said. All your comments, so if you have something new to add, we'd like to hear it.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I remember everything I said my whole life, since I was three. I remember everything. Okay, so I'm more addressing the commission. Pardon me, so Cynthia McCorkindale, nineteen Elgin Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. The commission, I just, I feel a little bit like I'm in Bizarro World or like a circus funhouse mirror where everyone talks about. How, it, it's almost like normal that these regulations um are normal. Or just because, you know, we're fit, we've ticked every box and it's all legal and isn't that great? Yes, of course, we all knew it was legal the whole time. What we are um imploring is that you look at, it's a quality of life issue, honestly. And I firmly believe this and it's not just coming from me. It's one thing to build in Stony Hill, it's another thing Cindy Lane got um downsized a little bit. This is just an affront, in my opinion, and I say to the commission, I implore the commission. To think really carefully because I know we have to choose our battles and, you know. Just think really carefully because this is a big, big, big decision. You've made decisions before, but I think this is where you're going to cross the Rubicon, honestly. And this is just going to set the stage for a lot of heartache. And I just want you to look at it in some humane way and understand the people in these areas. The traffic study did not include Whitney Road, period. It just didn't. So the fact that the uh representative is talking about the traffic study that they conducted, it was not a complete traffic study. So, and I don't even want to talk about the fugitive dust, which I did not bring up. And I also had not talked about the twenty five foot buffer, which is a bit hypocritical as far as the regulation goes. Because, okay, well, the industrial side has to put the twenty five uh foot buffer in, but you know, it's okay, the residential, they can just put it right up there. It doesn't make any sense. None of this makes sense. And I just hope that you will really carefully consider not just the, you know, we need affordable housing. Okay, we don't need a monolithic giant thing in the corner of a tiny neighborhood. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Excuse me, Kate, give the Florida Ken, if he has something.
Yes, there's somebody else. Very agreeably, I would agree with her completely and would just ask you to do. It, it is an important decision, um, and from our perspective, what the important decision is to follow the law, regardless of whether it's popular. And, and we think that's, that's, you know, that law can get changed. People can complain about it. I represent a lot of pounds that. Bring their, you know, bring their hands over it as well. Uh, but it, it. It, it should be based on, on that, yeah, review of your record, review the evidence of the record, not the popularity of the project. Um, and we're urged to, to follow, I'm sure, sure you will, and I know you have good guidance, so just ask you to do that. Um, rather than, you know, be persuaded by, by the emotion of the, of neighbors, which I, I truly understand. Um, and I represent the neighbors as well, but uh, uh, would ask you, as, as we suggested, that you, this is an important decision. And we think it is, uh, for you to follow with that, sure. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Which has confused me.
Sure.
Uh, it, it was, it was brought up twice. Why is it, and I, I don't understand it. Why is it the industrial has the twenty five feet? And the residential doesn't? And I, very selfish, I, I don't understand that. I wrote it down twice and didn't, didn't ask it, so.
Okay, basically, when you have a, an industrial use adjacent to a residential zone. It's required that the industrial must be twenty five feet from the ones.
So now you have.
With some kind of a buck.
Going next to a resi- uh.
I cannot speak for former.
That's the way the law was written.
But I can't speak for former um, uh, planners or zoners in regards to the vault property. I, I, I can only assume. And I would think that there was an assumption made that the industrial use that's associated on seventeen Whitney Road. Was considered part of the industry, so. So therefore that twenty five foot buffer would not be required.
When it becomes a residential use.
Correct. Well, it's becoming a residential use now. It existed as an industrial use, so therefore in the industrial. Industrial uses do not have to deal with buffers because. But now you're going from an industrial use to a residential use. The industry, if there, if there was homes existing there, the industrial use would have had to abide by that twenty five foot.
But, but being that it's an industrial use, which is doing what it's doing, and they had to put that.
There could have been an air main in the approval of that previous site plan.
But, but at that time, the zone may have been zoned industrial to correct, this site may have been zoned. It was, it was known industrial path.
Yeah.
At some point, you adopted official map and zoned a residential.
So, so the bottom line is, the residential doesn't have to do the.
There is a twenty five foot buffer.
Right.
From an industrial zone to a residential.
But not.
Not residential to industrial.
And that's the way it was written.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I need to know.
No, no, if, if Gaul came in and been, went out of business tomorrow. And a new company came in there and wanted to build an industrial use. They would be forced to set a twenty five foot.
Correct.
Yeah, right. If no other commissioners have any questions, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Go ahead, opinions, you know, you can send.
You can make a second and just do it.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Voting.
All the eyes.
Or you get anyone against?
Against.
Yes.
Could you state your name, please?
Me?
Yes.
Kenny Parsons. I'm voting against closing it.
Thank you. We have to start doing that now because when we start doing transcripts, we have to identify. It's so it's easier if there's no's to identify the one no, that means everybody else is an A. We have to do it by name for people that are doing transcripts on a previous application.
Bobby, can you vote?
I was a yes.
And Ken? Can you mute it? Yes.
Yes.
I read your lips.
I'm going to abstain, even though I know that abstentions go wherever the majority vote is. I'm. Okay, I got nothing here.
Okay, so.
And no, your name, please?
I'm sorry, Penny Kessler and I abstain.
So, this hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
We take a five minute recess, we make a motion to do that.
I doubt that we take a five minute recess.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 They voted yes. Motion to pass. Okay, we are about to start our public hearing. No. We're calling our meeting to order. For our public hearing for Steiner Inc., Route Six, the DCD Overlay Zone, Site Plan Special Permit. Twenty two single family units Benedict Road, eight, nine, ten, seventeen, and Millbrook Road. Are we ready?
Let's start with my comments.
Would you like to read the notice?
There's a public notice, we read the record.
The Beth to appear April fourteen and April twenty one, twenty twenty three public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. At seven PM in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. Steiner Inc. for property located at Benedict Road, eight, nine, ten, and seventeen Millbrook Road. From that amendment, Route Six to Route Six, plus a designed conservation district overlay zone. With a site plan and special permit for excavation to construct twenty two dwelling units. The property can be found in the assessors records as map fifty nine, block one oh four. And a portion of block oh one and oh two, sixty one through sixty four. A link to review the materials can be found on the town website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, Chairman.
You don't have a written report, I just have my notes in regards to this, um. A couple of points I want to make. The applicant proposes to use the principal concepts of the design conservation district. As an overlay to the Route Six zone, in order to develop a community of twenty two single family homes. Under the present Route Six zoning, approximately sixty seven units would be allowed in up to at least a two or three story building. If they were rented units per se. Even using the DCD overlay zone, twenty five units are allowed, twenty two are proposed. Uh, thirty five percent of the gross areas preserved is open space. Sidewalks are proposed along Benedict Road. An excavation permit is necessary for cuts and fills associated with the project. Um, and the staff of various departments within town hall has worked with the applicant over the last few months, months. Reviewing concepts prior to the final application that we for you this evening. Um, along with the applicant is a traffic impact statement prepared by VHB. Uh, revised drawings were submitted after initial town comments on the seventeenth of this month. And have to be reviewed by various departments in response to those, uh, to those revisions. Uh, just for the record, you have a memo in the drive from Tom Beal, the Public Facilities Director. Or Basil, the Director of Health, and James De Mayo, Engineering Department. As of today, we haven't heard from the Police Commission and the Fire Marshal. Um, they haven't submitted their final comments, but it's my understanding that, um, Tom Galford's been in touch with you about to spare a fine returning radio. Uh, there is also one email in public comments in the Google Drive from the Lori Krishna of one forty eight Old Polydol Road. So you will have to keep the hearing open this evening, but tonight it's really about the initial presentation and any questions from.
Mr. Olson? Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Steiner Inc., represented in the front row by Greg Steiner and Chris Steyer. We also have various members of our project team here in person and on Zoom. I have the notice of the hearing that was sent along with whatever green cards and return end of looks like you see back today. Uh, David, can you please share the plans and put up the zone map amendment? Matt, the survey for the map amendment?
David, are you there?
David?
Yes, I'm, I'm working on it, Madam Chair.
Faster.
There you go, the, the one with the green. That one. Um, I figured this was the best map to show you the property in question, does not have a street number on Benedict Road. We're working on reorganization of the property in the middle of the street, so I just can go and get TBD Benedict Road. And then it also includes four lots at the end of Millbrook. That's these parcels right there. So it's the whole parcel, the final parcel is in green on our zone change map. Uh, the lines you see here are one hundred feet and five hundred feet, there are no disrequirements. Uh, the Wetlands Commission has had two meetings on this application. And last night they directed that staff draft a resolution of approval for their May fifteenth special meeting. Um, so it's still a ways away before we have a decision from them. We have that in exchange with the account engineer and we responded to all of his comments and submitted a set of revised plans. As Beth noted, we're still waiting for comments from him in the revised plans. Uh, the entire parcel with land in question is in RT six zoning district. We started our approval process with you last fall, where we asked that you put before. We started our approval process with you last fall where we asked that you put before Millbrook lots into the R T six zone to facilitate this development. At the same time, we asked for a text amendment to the designed conservation district overlay zone that would allow it to be applied over property in the R T six zone. Again, to facilitate this development. Both of those applications were approved by you and. The density allowed by that text amendment in the R T six zone is one unit per ten thousand square feet of land area. We did ask that you change the D C D zone to allow a slight coverage increase to twenty five percent. Again, that's what we ended up needing in order to make this development work. Uh, but you did approve that. So we're here now to ask you to apply the D C D district to the property. Again, that's what this map is for. For a site plan and special permit under the D C D D C D zone both required. Um, and for an explanation, fill permit as Beth noted, that's required for the site work. Put up our renderings. I think we've shown this to you before as to what the houses are going to look like in this project. David. Oh, we just lost the chair.
Okay, I'll put it back up. I thought you were. I thought you were trying to remember in for a second there. I'm sorry, attorney.
For my comments here.
Okay, would she, Attorney Olson?
Let's get it go down one more sheet.
Okay.
Yes, that's it. Thank you. So the development meets all the requirements of the D C D zone. Uh, all the dimensional requirements. One requirement that is in the D C D zone is that thirty five percent of the land area be set aside as open space. We've prepared this survey to show you that we're uh that's what we're setting aside as open space. It's essentially all the Millbrook lots um and a bit of the um sewer line wetlands I call them, that that line that runs west, eastern. Um, that will be subject to a conservation movement, probably running in favor of the homeowners association. This is going to be a common interest community. They'll have individual lots, but everybody will own their own their home within a community that will take care of all of them. So a- as a result of wetlands being somewhat ahead of you, I think we're kind of fortunate that we arrived here tonight. We've already gone through a full set of comments of the engineer and we think our plans are in pretty good shape. So interested, uh, not really going to focus on the engineering part. Come back to that, but what we'd like to do is start with Sabine Grave, who's with A Two Land Consulting. And she participated in the preparation of the landscape plan. Um, David, can you call the landscape plan up? And I guess we'll put it up on the easel if somebody hasn't. So we'll start with the pretty pictures. Sabine.
Simple graphic, yeah. So good evening. For the record, my name is Sabine Grave, and I'm a registered landscape architect with A Two Land Consulting in New Fairfield, Connecticut. Um, I'd like to begin by walking you through the property and showing you our proposed landscaping. Along Benedict Road, we're proposing a streetscape, retaining some of the existing larger trees and adding new up to the lower vehicles. For safety and screening, you can follow this dotted line with circles. We are proposing a six foot height solid fence along the frontage and down the northern property line just past the last unit seventeen. As you enter the site, we have two curved stone walls that will have the site signage underplanted with a mix of evergreens, ornamental shrubs, blank by hollies, and two snow goose sweeping cherries. Along the southern border, we are proposing some screen plantings, including a mix of giant arborvitae and white pines. Interior to the site, in total, you'll see a number of trees planted along the drives and then strategic points, some ornamentals, which you can see with a little bit of color. We have bohull maples, columbar inhabit, street trees, some Nissa salvatica, which is black topello, satomi dogwoods, and crab apples as our ornamental plantings. Other ornamentals to give the site four seasons interest includes spirea, holly, palm grass, and rhododendron. Central location is the biorepension basin. The perimeter is planted with a mix of native shrubs, including inkberry, dogwood, summer sweet cluckra, winter berry, and service berry. The basin itself will be overseeded with Ernst rain garden seed mix and allowed to establish itself for at least one growing season. Thereafter, it shall be mown annually late in the fall. This will allow for a deep and dense root system to be established. A wetland buffer planting, as you can see, fully needed here, is proposed consisting again of Nissa or black topello, inkberry, elderberry, blueberry, dogwood, and viburnum, all of which are great sources of food and habitat for wildlife. Last but not least, our areas for outdoor recreation, which you'll see here and here. In the east, past unit seventeen, again, since unit seventeen is a large, open, moaned lawn area for relaxing or play. To the south of unit seven, here, we have designed an ornamental gravel seating area for picnic tables with a butterfly garden that has an evergreen backdrop of specimen eastern red cedar, American holly, and rhododendrons. Perennials will include yarrow, bee balm, black eyed susan, silver grass, and creeping pine. Overall, we're going for a simple, clean, high end look with four season interest. And that about covers the main landscaping points. I have quickly a little bit about our photometrics. Um, I'd like to mention that we also have submitted a photometric plan in our package for the site lighting. We're proposing the promenade fixture by current at three thousand K color temperature and a mounting height of fourteen feet. We have placed these lighting elements strategically along the walkway and front entrance for both safety and aesthetics without overdoing it. Our intent is not to illuminate an airport, but rather to provide a safe and comfortable environment for residential living. Um, that about covers. Unless there's any questions, at which point I'll turn over to Doug.
Sabine, can you just explain what three thousand K color temperature means?
That's about the mid range on lighting. When you get up into the higher levels, you have a bright, intense light. In the lower levels, you have an orange light, which is a lot like high pressure sodium lighting. It's not very attractive. And this mid range gives you about a balance of both those. It gives you the light and clarity necessary to see properly in the dark at the same time, not that orange. Or or it's a little bit warmer. Let's put it that way.
Do you have a site light, please?
Yes, we do.
It's it's a three back. I bet people at those pages over three back.
See.
Or sorry, the last one. The last plank in everything.
Ribbon in here.
One more back.
One more? No, this is a plant. There's got to be one more. Here it is. Site lighting. Thank you. Here you can also see a detail in the spires of this road. This is the head. I'll be on the fourteen zone. This is for your. There are a total of six of the S L fives and nine of the S L fours. Which is a fifteen in total.
That's a decorative pole as well. It's not a square post.
Yes, it's a whole series and the poles match the light. Um, there will be poles mounted on top of the signage here to also be entryway to get a little additional.
That'll look good.
Exactly. A little bit of aesthetics and again, a nice warm entryway to the site as well.
And you don't anticipate any light pollution bothering any neighboring properties? I don't think there's anybody close.
No, no. And these these lighting units here show actually what lumens are calling in those areas. There's not much, if any spillage.
Yeah.
It's up. And again, that middle range is to keep it from looking like an airport.
Yeah.
It's supposed to give it a more quaint and quiet fact.
Can you explain what solid fencing?
Solid fencing?
What was it?
Is it no gap?
Vinyl? No, is it vinyl? Is it wood?
You guys are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sabine. Abigail Adams, also of A Two Land Consulting is on the Zoom. Um, so everybody knows that. Um, Doug, you're up. Doug Dnesta is project engineer.
Thank you.
Doug, David, can you make sure you've got the current set of revised plans that we submitted last week?
My apologies, Attorney Olson. I will bring that up.
Thanks. Just want to make sure you're showing the same thing Doug's pointing to.
Understood.
Good evening. My name is Doug Dnesta, Special Engineer. That's the applicant. Um, what you got planned here is S E five, which is our city Philly plan. It shows a greeting on there as well. Um, as we talked about, we've got an entrance way, a twenty two foot wide driveway coming in off of Benedict. Then we come into a T. You go to the north, then you go to the south. These are twenty four foot wide driveways going to the individual homes, a driveway going to the single family, to each of the single family or single garage uh to the houses. Uh, each of them will have a patio or deck off the back there for some painting areas. Um, in terms of our rate, we've got sewer available, which is sewer comes down Melbrook. Uh, takes a ninety go east and takes another ninety out towards um Stoney, Stoney Hill. We went to P U C and we got a tool for the allotment of the Senate Benedictary Sewer. We're tying into the sewer, uh, an existing manhole located at the bend of at the end of Melbrook. Then it comes into it and goes to the north and goes to the south servicing to the homes. There is water on the site coming in off of Benedict coming to the side and then the go around serving each of these visual homes. Uh, there's gas available. Uh, so we make out houses into gas or my propane. You show uh propane. We do show gas in the in the line in the street here. Um, in the event that we don't use it, we have we're showing propane tanks on each individual homes as well for for heating and for cooking purposes. Um, in terms of drainage, um, the site's unique site is that it's fairly flat as one does property. Um, had a difficult time trying to go with the conventional um pipe and conveyance system. I mean, catch basin and conveyance system. So we got too deep and couldn't get the water out as being required. So what we're looking at doing is allowing it to roam to sheet flow down to an area between buildings, uh, seven, excuse me, yes, eight and eight and nine, and between building thirteen and fourteen. There's going to be a stone line swell consisting of river rock. Uh, that's going to take the convey the water from the road in front of front person of the houses on the west side of the road, convey it down to a bio bio retention area. The bio retention area has been designed. Um, I have a section here that might be a little easier to explain. So what views of the blow up up here is built here's building eight and nine. Here's the swell. This is the roadway sidewalk and it'd be a passageway underneath the um sidewalk to get the water down. And this is buildings four, thirteen and fourteen, they'd work down to file retention area. File retention area is going to be a shallow depressed area to handle the first inch runoff to control that part of water, water quality volumes. Um, and also it's been designed as a detention basin to handle the two, ten, twenty five fifty year design storms and then a hundred year storms who overflow into a yard drain, which are these circles you have in here. So once it reaches that level, what is ample trade down to a a an underdrain in the in the bio retention area. Um, we'll treat the water, the and the underdrain will hit the water now and put it into the um hollow structures underneath there for containing the water and to control at least the water out to control up to a hundred year storm. We have a control device at the end. The various offices that control the flows that will go out, flow down in a west easily direction to a catch basin, then out to a uh preformed uh scalpel and then out towards the wetland area. And that's what that's so that's they think looking at a small plan, here's the bio retention area and detention. I was coming down to a catch basin and then through the throughout and then towards the towards the um uh weapons on the southeast corner of the property. Um, James De Mayo, your your town engineer had reviewed the project. Um, we we've addressed all his comments and based on my conversation the other day, he's all satisfied with my comments that we've addressed. Um, all his comments and we're we're good shape with the with the engineering health department. Uh, there's three comments. One, two, we're just really just comments. The other one was about the garbage collection. Uh, there'll be garbage collection, will be individual cans, um carts for each of the houses and they and and they will be stored during off trash clutching day in the garages themselves. So we've addressed um the comments from the Director of Health. Um, in terms of fire, we did uh, we talked with Tom Gil um Gelford uh back, we first started the project and he gave us indication what kind of truck he's we yeah, perhaps can be out there. We've got the radiuses requirements for the uh driveways coming in and also for the hammerhead for trucks to turn around. Uh, where we will be working on with our traffic engineer, a a plan that's going to show the turning movements for the apparatus for 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 Tom to review. Um, in terms of road control, steel fence around the perimeter and along the wetlands, uh any tracking path in the beginning. Um, we have stockpiles at various locations, the dewatering pits and things like that. We have the site here if we do hit water uh when we do come into the project. Um, if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them or if we wait till the end.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, we prepared and submitted a traffic study along with this application and our traffic engineer, Joe Balskus from V H B is on the Zoom. I hope at least he was a few minutes ago. Joe.
You're off.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Good. Can you give us a brief summary of your traffic study?
Yes, so Joe Ballsus, for the record, licensed special engineer, state of Connecticut V H B. I've obviously been in front of the commission in the past. Um, we did a, you know, traffic study for this small development in terms of traffic generation. I'm not going to go through the whole study. We we looked at available traffic volume data. That was uh on the on the area roadways. We looked at basically the trip generation for this being twenty two units, if I have those units correct. We have uh about nineteen vehicles being generated in the morning peak hour and twenty four in the afternoon peak hour. So not a high generator of traffic, as you can imagine. So you really have less than one vehicle for every two minutes. That would be accessing this development. So a very low generator. Uh, the site drive is just south of Route Six intersection, as you're aware. We'll look at the sight lines as well. Um, we look at the crash data at the intersection. Uh, the the crash, the crash days in report as well. Didn't see a a significant pattern of crashes here that would be affected by the traffic being generated by this development. So um, as you can imagine, with a low generator, good site distances. Um, we we don't see an impact from this development on the adjacent railway traffic. So that's a conclusion of our traffic study that there's no significant impact to traffic operations at the Benedict roadside drive or the intersection with Route Six. And that's my presentation. We'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. That's all we have for tonight. Obviously, we're happy to. Is there any questions that you have?
Okay, so uh first I'd like to ask if anyone in the public would like to ask any questions?
Sure, I have a good question. Would I come out and give you my name and best date?
Uh, can we move?
Yeah. I'm gonna trip over it.
I know. I was gonna trip over.
Not not a chance.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, which is Kenny sixty seven Benedict Road, two questions I have. The existing, because I have terrible spatial skills, the existing gate that's on the property right now, is that in the location of the entrance?
No, no.
No. Okay, so it's for it's it's.
By the um by the telephone pole.
Chris Steiner, sorry. Chris Steiner, for the record, uh Steiner. There is a utility pulse, a utility pole that's kind of in the back.
Okay, so where is and currently the gate? So it's for it's closer because I'm right here. Okay, okay. Okay. And then the other question I had was in terms of the the width of the roads in um internally, is there enough area for people to be able to like if somebody has a party for cars to be parked? Or are they going to be parking on Benedict? Because there's not enough within the site, the width of those roads, because you don't have you only have a couple of visitor parks and the driveways aren't terribly long. So that was my question as to whether or not the width of the roads within the development is wide enough for cars to be safely parked.
For guests.
For guests, exactly. Or are they going to be parking on Benedict, which at this point doesn't have any restrictions in terms of parking? And maybe there need, you know, so that was those were my two questions.
Doug, can you answer that?
Wait and keep saying to be on the.
Sure.
On the uh, David, is there anyone on Zoom?
Uh, I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised, but I will uh remind anyone who wants to offer public comment and has uh not participated in any of the previous planning zoning commission meetings, you can uh bring your cursor to uh. Bring your cursor to the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app and click on the. Icon that looks like a pair of people, it says the word participants, clicking on the icon brings up a list of attendees for tonight's meeting, you would. Click next to your own name and you can do what's called raising your hand. Raising your hands, it gives us a cue for people that want to offer public comment on Zoom. So if, if you do have. Comments, I would recommend you raise your hands so that we can get you in order.
Thank you. I don't understand any, so would you like to answer that question?
Dr. Donesta, again, the internal roads are twenty-four foot wide. We do have guest parking, we've got, we've got about nine guest parking spaces, so we feel that they're additional parking space that we provide. As well as the width of road, there'd be insufficient. Area for anybody having a party to park on the road or parking the guest spaces and not park on Benedict's.
Are you, that.
Well, yeah, I guess I would just want to. Maybe, maybe my work might, as a resident of the neighborhood, I don't want them parking on Benedict, maybe that area. By the microtel and along Benedict, because I'm on that curb, we're at the bad curb, we don't want people parking on there because it makes it dangerous for all of us. So to make that, no park, you know, a zone by posted no parking area. So.
Okay. Can I show numbers?
It's a great plan, it's very respectful, I think you guys put together a tight presentation, you addressed everything. It was, it was, it's great, it's, it's refreshing and it's nice to see, you know, you being respectful of the town and the neighborhood and. Well done. Thank you. One thing I would add. But sidewalks, I like sidewalks that go to nowhere, so if you consider putting sidewalks on, on your Route six property heading down towards. You know, you could, we could almost get a contiguous sidewalk for.
We do have that.
To get all the way up.
Probably a sidewalks.
But when we come. The short answer is that property's not part of the application.
Understood.
When it is developed, we will.
Nice try.
Are you channeling Diction?
We all do. Mr. Stanley.
I, I like the application. I echo. Your sentiments perfectly, because I can't think of your name for that. I would. I would like to see it hooked in the gas, and you guys are still talking about that, instead of having each house have a propane tank, just because. It looks too pretty to have propane tanks mounted on the back of each house. In my opinion, especially because they're close to each other and, you know, it's just one less thing to have to look at if you're on the back patio. You know, firing up the grill and see, you know, just one less thing to look at, but I really like it. Yeah, I, I, there is sidewalk inside, right, that is what I'm seeing here along.
Correct.
Okay. The, I actually did have two questions though, as far as the water. Went between buildings nine and, or eight, nine and thirteen and fourteen, is that, that's like an open. Riprap that goes there, or is that?
Open swell.
So it's, so it's open between there.
Correct.
And that'll be maintained, I assume, through the homeowners association, like, will we, because eventually, you know, it's going to be graded up and. And then the, for the hundred-year storm net, is that a pipe that goes out? Is that, or is that another like open swell as you're calling it?
No.
That's a pipe that goes out.
It goes into the house structure underneath the bio.
Yeah.
Area. And then it goes out to, to a pipe, fifteen-inch pipe down to a catch basin.
Out to this.
The riprap out there, correct.
Cool. No, then, that pops off my questions for now. Well, well done, I, I like the application, I like the. I like it, looks good.
No questions? Well.
Yeah, generally like if I just a, a couple of questions, because I'm, I'm not too familiar with the property, there's a, Millbrook Road, is that paved up to the end? Where it is now, it's dirt, right?
It's a paper road beyond.
Okay, beyond.
Right here. So it is, so there's no. Property between us and. Millbrook owners, there is a turnaround sphere.
Okay, and it's closed off, there's no access. Is there any other public access into the wetlands area, or would there be a reason to be?
No, not at all. It'll be owned by the homeowners association.
Right. And then, is on the recreation space on the, I guess, the eastern side there, how would people access that?
You're talking to the field. There, is there a post to remain turf, so if you do want to play game, I would see the soft surface. Exactly.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to, I guess it's not people's property because it's community covenant, that you would. Just, would there be like a walkway through or?
The most logical way to go, or that people go, this is where the basement area is, this is already sort of a nice area to block through, and I imagine people will go through back there. Rather than crossover driveways and homes.
Right, and is there other improvements going on back there?
Select as open space.
And total number of.
That's your question, we did provide a little bit of a pathway through here, if you're in the community, you can walk this way behind the buildings that area too, so we did. Flatten this area.
And total number of bedrooms, just refresh my.
Sorry, for the homes?
Yes. They're all three bedrooms.
Yes.
Yeah, we're looking plans, no, no plans to put a pool or playground area? Ken?
Really nicely done. Really nice, the landscape plan is very nice.
Thank you.
I really like your choices all the way around there.
Nice job, thanks very much.
Dick Shannon? Ken Stevens.
So I, thank you very much for the presentation, it's outstanding, professionally done. And I'm very pleased with the way you presented it to the commission. I do have one question. And I probably have my directions wrong, because I don't have a compass with me here, but. I, I think it's the west side of the development, what's the distance from there to Route six? I remember, recall some discussion that in the future that may be reserved for retail or commercial.
It's more than two hundred and seventy-five feet, because that's the standard in the regulation.
And what would the buffer be down the road if you do go to commercial? Development there between the development, the housing development and the commercial development, is that's two, what's the distance required then?
Oh, we have the landscape buffer on our side of the property line as shown on our plans. I don't know what the rear yard setback would be in the commercial zone, but.
Okay, it's unfortunate I'm not in the room because I can't really see the plan, so those two questions.
Can put it up for you, David.
I will put them up, Attorney Olson, one second please.
I, I think it's a little complicated to answer that question at this point, because we have to take in consideration that it's a corner lot.
Yeah, well, that's true too, yeah.
So at the time, we would make the determination of setbacks.
To, to be clear, there's two.
Right.
One's a corner lot, that's where the former Littlest Angel was. We've done some reorganization, but it's the same size lot. And then the remainder of the parcel is its own lot here. So, yeah, there'll be different setbacks and.
Yes.
Sorry, but, but.
Peter, it's two hundred and.
It's that, you know, we have a fence along the property line, that's going to provide visual buffering.
Okay.
From any of the, some of the commercials.
And then you did say it's two hundred and seventy-five feet from the current development. That's good, that answers.
That's the requirement in the regulations.
Very good. Nice job, guys, thank you very much.
Okay, I have a question on. Future development of the front, front piece. I, I, I know it's not under consideration tonight, but planning for the future. Part of developing that property would probably entail correcting that offset intersection. Where the Littlest Angel is, is there enough, is, is that going to line up pretty well?
We have no.
Drive way to there.
We have no comment on what may be or may not be required on that intersection in the future. We have no plans, we have no thoughts, we have nothing.
We, we, we've just, this commission just stepped into.
Are the houses that are going to be along Benedict, are they going to be interfering with lining that up?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I just have one, one comment, in the past. We've had members of public ask questions about future developments. And of course, one of the big questions was, would there be electrical for even cars? And of course, I understand you've already taken care of that. There will be connections. So thank you very much, the second thing, and I've been asked. Who asked the question is, has anybody ever thought of solar, solar power? For any, for any developments? Because.
For any developments or for this?
Well, we are for subdivision developments that come before us. And here we are. So let me ask you a question, was there ever a thought?
We, we have not, we have not had those discussions.
Well, maybe it's up for the future.
Can I just piggyback on that? These are individually owned homes.
Yes.
However, so they, and they are subject to an HOA. However. Are individual homeowners permitted to put solar panels on their homes?
That's a question I don't know the answer to, because it wouldn't be decided until condominium documents were drafted. And condominium association, so you define what you own. And these homeowners could own to the underside of the roof.
So these are condominiums.
The outside of the roof.
Well, these are, and let me just be clear, be clear, this is a condominium association. A condominium community, got it, okay.
Yeah, the word condominium people have in their mind as to what they think it means, but, but there's a whole lot of different types of.
No, I, I understand.
Common interest community.
Right, it means that you own a certain part of the dwelling.
You own your unit.
Right.
And whether that unit is a whole home or a flat or a townhome.
Right.
And, and most of the time, you don't own the grounds.
Right.
But you can do common interest communities where you own part of the ground. Or where you have a limited ownership of, you know, your driveway.
Understood, okay.
I, I have not drafted these documents, I won't be drafting these documents, and they haven't been drafted yet, so I don't know how that's.
No, I just wanted to, I, I thought they were. Like, out, out flat out homes, but they are condominium style, got it.
My question was one that was asked by the public and asked us to put it forward. Because that's what we're supposed to do, move to the future. So thank you, did you have something to add?
Depending on what you write into a regulation for the homeowners association would depend on whether or not you could put solar panels out or fly a flag or do different things. Those things are written up. We can't say, you know. The, the one, one person will be able to put a solar panel on his house and the other twenty, twenty-one could.
Right. The decision usually comes down to whether you want to make the homeowner to be responsible to replace the roof, what it needs replacing. So just as an example, when we get forty-two chestnut. Most of those are single-family homes, but there's one unit that, that two units in it. So we felt that in that particular case, the association should be responsible to replace roofs when it came to it. Don't know what decisions can be made here.
Understood.
That's the type of thing we have to think about.
No, understood. Okay, okay.
One, one other just. Comment, we were thought, now that I see the colored one, back to the sidewalks, was there any thought about putting sidewalk in front of? The western. Bottom, like eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, I see there's just nothing in front of them.
Yeah, we, we only put sidewalks on one side of the.
Okay. Not the ones all the way at the end.
Any point on the road, there is a sidewalk, it's just only on one side. So that's why we wanted.
I mean, I don't.
It'd be, it'd be a bit of a coverage for not much.
It's not within the community.
That's what I'm just thinking of. Again, I'm just tossing it out there, not, not knocking you one way or the other, or just.
That's the journey you need to have. Anyone else? Okay, so this hearing will continue until May ninth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now we have our business meeting. I would like to see Rob for Rich Tivitz.
Other point of order.
Yes.
We have no rhyme or reason how we're seating people, so, and they haven't been seated in your board meetings and other. At the point of work, we didn't need a process. Right, thank you. We should just figure out how those.
You're absolutely right, I, I wasn't aware that I wasn't. Okay, minutes of three twenty-eight, twenty-three.
I will accept the minutes of March twenty-eighth, twenty-three.
Wait a second. Thank you, Ken.
Correction, correction.
Go ahead.
I, I know it's, it's not a big thing, but we pledged to flag twice at the beginning of that meeting.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you Bob.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, okay, all in favor?
I.
Same, abstention? Motion passes. Invoices. Let's make motion for the invoices.
I move that we. Pay. Seven hundred and forty-four dollars to the News Times, do we have to do it separately or me to them together? I think margin, okay, seven hundred and forty-four dollars to the News Times and five hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's for consultant, for, for our consultant.
Yes, that's correct.
One second?
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Abstention, motion passive. Okay, good, new business. TB Two Turnage LLC, Two Turnage Lane, concept plan. I'm on it.
Good evening all. Looking record, Dennis, professional engineer. Officer in Brooklyn, Connecticut, here on behalf of the applicant for preliminary looksee. Teton Brown, local landscaping contractor owns property of two Turnage Lane. Used to be occupied by American Hinge years ago. And as, you know, as, as a matter of history, back in two thousand and three. Ralph Gallagher prepared a plan for a ten thousand square foot addition to American Hinge and parking. Associated with that. Subsequently, it looks like, came back in two thousand and nine. Similar approval, if not identical approval. Was granted. And our client due owners of the property want to not. Put an addition on the building, but they desperately need parking. So. You know, we hopefully prepared a couple of concept plans. Property itself is generally flat. You know, through, I'd say, about two acres worth of the property, it's about two point seven acres. And the remainder is a pretty steep rise up. To the west. And in an effort to minimize cost of construction of the parking. We said, hey, let's try and follow along the, the same idea as was followed. By the prior approval, which was of the parking right up against, you know, no closer than ten feet of the property line. The challenges, regulations say that you can only do that with the approval by the commission. Otherwise, we need to be setback twenty-five feet, so, and, and maybe, I mean, like confusing, but I'll show you. This is. Copy of the plan that was approved by the commission. In two thousand and three.
Copy of the plan that was approved by the commission, um, in two thousand and three and in two thousand and nine. Again, respecting a ten-foot setback from the front property line. And again, parking along here and the building proposed. And what our clients wish to do is. Park. Um, I've been by there and parking's bad. They have a lot of employees and a lot of cars out on the road.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Even on weekends. I mean, they, it's the high season, right? But. Yeah, well, you know, just, just the same. They need parking and, you know, honestly, they probably would want us to put more on, uh, this plan. But, you know, every, every single parking station that's going on. Costs more and more as we're going to be cutting into the hillside. Um, so again, we thought we, you know, let's ask before we spend a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of money preparing. I personally would prefer to see them parked in a parking lot close to the road than parked in the.
Absolutely.
Right now.
So it was going to take a lot of excavation.
Well, even to do this, we'd take quite a bit of excavation in that we're now biting into the hillside as we get to the western portion of the property. Um.
Would you have to put in retaining walls, you think?
Likely have to put in some retaining walls here. Um, and, and again, we'll take a look at it, but plans that were previously approved, approved. Contemplated just grading out. So we might be able to do that, having.
Chased that down, yeah.
Into it. But again, yeah, we, uh, the, these parking spaces will have to nibble a little bit into the hillside to try to. Keep it pretty much on the existing, uh, limits of, of existing application.
How many exact parking spaces are you in? What do you think's out?
Uh, on this plan, it shows about twenty-two. And basically doubling. Um, and then, you know, as I was sitting in the back looking, thinking how great I am. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. That we missed that we only need an additional handicap parking. So, you know, we'll lose, you know, a couple of spaces in there, but. For a concept, it's, it's, it's pretty close. But, yeah, we should be able to double our parking.
Were there any real issues with the previous proposal?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, again, it. It seemed ambitious, you know, you know, a huge building, but, um. This, this one shouldn't be too horrible.
Those are trail spots along the left side there.
Exactly. They've, they've got a number of trails and, and, you know, they'd like to have more trails. Um, but again, we, we kind of maxed out in the flat area. And we value it to be a little bit easier to back the trailers in. Now, I'm not even for trailer and a vehicle. Like partners. So, and the other thing they're constantly saying, well, you know, maybe we'll put another curb cut in, but at this point.
The other, the other door had a curb cut out there.
I was supposed to ask, was there a thought of doing that? And I know you're in the concept.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, it's the right time to ask, uh, again, bringing back the old man. They had a quick, but over further on down. Um, if we do something, it's probably suggested they pull it this way, a little bit eastward to line up. And make it easier. I'm sorry, keep flipping.
That's right.
I'm following the guys on TV.
Oh.
Um, but anyways, it, um, I, I would think maybe lining up with the trailer parking might make it a little bit easier for them to negotiate with those spaces.
Dennis, don't they have another building in the crack park too?
I think they do.
Yeah, they do.
They haven't.
A one.
They, they, they haven't asked me to look into it or anything like that, right? I think right now they'd like to. Just to keep everything in one spot.
I like, I like the concept. I think that they were even gonna, if they're gonna do it. If they want to, they even go a little further, they should. The same, the same thing. Here, do it, do it now. If they think they're gonna get it.
Well, again, it's.
They're growing.
Yeah, growing company and, and, yeah, I went to their website. You know, for.
Wow, so where, where is the entrance to this property?
So right now, the entrance is, is, is right in here.
Yeah, so that's.
The, the interstate at the end of the road, right? Yeah, that's how the primary car, car street going all the way back.
I did, I was there. And I wondered why.
Yeah.
What do you need from us?
Uh, just the, the. Yeah, I'm hoping to get a warm and fuzzy about allowing us to park closer than twenty-five feet to the.
Now, is that, that, that front line there? Is that all landscaping that you're?
Yes, what we propose here is, you know, that, that's a ten-foot area. And you get one thing that I. I, I noticed here on the, uh, the survey map. There is power and, and communication lines. I'm not sure if they're in the right, they must be in the right way. But I think, you know, we'll be pretty close to our plants in, in that vicinity. So we'll have to, uh, get it a little further marked out before we.
So you're looking, so you're looking for the commission to give you the nod?
I was. Just a warm, a warm and fuzzy, you know, I, I understand.
Going closer to waving the twenty-five to ten feet from the line in order to proceed with your plan. That's what you're looking for this evening?
Correct. And again, I, I realize there's no, there are no guarantees, but, you know.
So he's looking for a consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I personally myself, okay, with the parking would be so close to you, but with that. Great line of landscaping, it would take the parking not right there out, out of your face and, but it would also take the parking off the road.
Nothing off to the side. He doesn't, it's not even in anybody's face.
No, but I mean, it would make it more attractive.
Yeah.
Uh, for the parking in general area. So I'd be a fan of it.
Yeah, the great company will invest more into talent, to win.
Right.
I say, let's, yeah, go forward. No concerns at all.
No, no concerns.
No.
Do you have a consensus of the power?
Bob? Bob, Ken? No?
Okay, it's over.
Okay, everybody raise your hand.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay.
To have a consensus.
Wow.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Nicely run commission too. I love listening to, uh, to the, uh, the information. Lee, although I missed the first one. That one was the last one.
Yeah, you want, you want to sit over here and look?
Want to join us?
I've done my part.
So our next.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Uh, East Station Place LLC sixty-one South G. Uh, that's not what you're here for.
No, it is. I don't have anything to say. We sit in public here.
Okay. Oh, that's it. Oh, okay. If somebody likes to make a motion here?
I have to.
Do you want to say something here?
Want to be a date?
Oh, for when? Uh, it's either May ninth or May twenty-third. No?
Be in June.
Okay, all right. June thirteenth or June twenty-seven?
It's, sorry, it's, it's not possible that June is that soon.
It is.
It's horrible.
It is.
I hate, I just talking about it.
Uh, June thirty. Do I?
June. On two, June thirteen. June thirteen.
Good.
Make a motion, remove the, uh, South Street proposal.
East, east.
Sixty-one.
East Station.
Sixty-one South Street, East Station Place to June thirteen. Thank you. Second.
And to notify all the appropriate agencies in there. Great, okay.
Second.
First, we have a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion pass. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, good night.
Thank you.
Work session, we have nothing. Commission comments? Hey, commission members, how come you're not on here, Ben?
And one comment, and now actually, if, um, during, and I actually was, uh, too bad Pete, Peter just walked out. Uh, during that training online seminar we had, uh, Peter, when, during his portion. Uh, made a comment that we should be taking all roll call votes. All roll call votes.
And.
Roll call.
Roll call.
All I discussed.
All your names.
Okay.
Well, Paul, I discussed, Paul, I discussed that with Beth previously, and we were going to start at last meeting, however.
We didn't have a last meeting.
Right, so, um, I would like to start doing that at our next meeting.
I agree. I think we should. It, it, it covers, it covers, for lack of a better term, it covers our rears.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Raising our hand.
Instead of raising our hands and the people on, he wants to, don't know, he said yes, don't know who, you'll just go down the line. You know.
Exactly what we discussed. Roll call on every vote.
And also, um, to Doug's point of, um, order before, if you recall, you had the listing. And, um, of alternates, and we had had that discussion also to ensure.
I had made up a, a little, for lack of a better word, a tracking form, who was seated on what night, so that we don't continue to repeat seating the same people.
That we wrote.
Thank you.
And we didn't have our last meeting, so these items could be.
No.
This is.
No, that, thank you, thank you, definitely. And, and we, we should really, we, we have to move forward, and that's a great way to do it.
And, and I think using, using Zoom, uh, and, and, and I, there's been times where I'm at home and Zoom.
Right.
And it's easier that way, just to keep track of. Who's voting what, and, and it also here to record the commission members that are on Zoom.
Exactly.
Of what their votes are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, just to keep it all in the up and up, because I, I think right now, um, as a commission. There's a lot of people on the outside that are, got the mic, the microscope on us, uh, just because of. Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Just because of the environment that we're, we're in right now. So I think we should try to. Do our best to be on the up and up.
I, I, yes, thank you, thank you for that. And I think we all agree that that was.
All right, so I think, so starting next weekend or next. Great, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up, Paul. You beat me to it.
Sorry, still your thunder.
Is it appropriate to?
Younger than you.
About. What the fallout. Of a FOIA. Thing. Would be. For the commission members.
I think that's.
We, we, we heard a lot of. Information. Much of it was of potentially negative nature, and I'm just wondering what is, what could be? The fallout on staff, commission members and things like that. Assuming that all of that negativity happens. I'm trying to really be circumspect here.
Um, I, I, I'll, I'll defer to my other comment from before is I can put you in touch with the, um. Attorney handling the, the comments or the request from the present, uh, FOIA that's involved. Um, the other, and what I can do is I can make arrangements for him to come in or to speak to the commission.
That'd be great.
It's that would be helpful to you to reassure you.
It's nice to have us all here at the same thing at the same time.
Yeah.
Maybe we do that next meeting, come in at six thirty, come in at six thirty and have an executive chat.
Absolutely. And I'll be sure to, um, forward him a transcript of this meeting and the comments that I have.
Maybe you could, maybe you could forward his contact, their contact information to us, so if we wanted to reach out.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.